Evening, everybody. I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Board of Education, Pedaluma City School District. We would all raise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Glad that you had it one time. Sit here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Derek. So the first item that we have on the agenda is a public hearing. And the public hearing is regarding the potential name change of the Pedaluma High School football soccer field. A group of citizens, family members, alumni, some administration, and some teachers at Pedaluma High School have formed a committee. And per board policy, they have asked the board to consider the renaming of the Durst Field to, I believe it would be Ellison. So because this is a public hearing, I get to do this. The public hearing is open, and I will take comments from the public on this thought. So is there anybody that would like to speak regarding this request? Debbie, when you come up, if you would state your names and your address.
Hi, my name is Debbie Raffelli. I live at 405 Black Oak Drive, Pedaluma, 94952. I'm the athletic booster president at Pedaluma High School, and the boosters received the guidelines from the district for renaming the facility. And per those guidelines, we formed a committee made up of community members, teachers, coaches, and former players, and together we came up with the idea of renaming Durst Field. Steve Ellison has had a storied career as a football coach at Pedaluma High from 1977 to 2009, when he retired after 31 years being head varsity coach. During his tenure, he taught kids life lessons both on and off the field. He was a beloved coach and teacher at Pedaluma High School and continues to give his time to the football program. And he and his wife continue to be our number-one supporters in the stands. He respected his kids in the classroom and on and off the field, and has been adored by many throughout the years. We can't think of a more fitting tribute than renaming our football field Ellison Field. So this is in support of the boosters and everyone on the committee that's been participating in the faculty at Pedaluma High School.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Debbie Overton. I live at 415 Melvin, Pedaluma, 94952. And I spoke at an earlier meeting about why I felt it was a right to rename the field to Ellison Field, and so I'll just reiterate some of that. You know, Steve Ellison is just, you know, his record speaks for itself. I know Mark Mizibian in the past got up and spoke to that and...
Paul Hahnner.
And it speaks for itself, but I think what's even more important, above and beyond, the coach that he was on the field for, what, three decades, basically? I think that he's just a person of impeccable character and integrity. And I think that he has been that way every day of his time at Pedaluma High and even after he left Pedaluma High, in a way in which he represents himself in the community, not just to students, present and past, but also as, you know, we've all become adults. He still represents himself that way, and he is there to provide advice and guidance to all of his students, past and even house students today. There you go.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Mizibian. I live at 1070 Rancho Lindo Drive in Pedaluma, 94952. I spoke before on my recommendation of this renaming of the field. And I talked a little bit last time about Coach Ellison, as far as the program he runs. Obviously, he's averaged 200 wins, and his record speaks for himself on the football field. But I think more importantly, he was a, and still is, a terrific person. The program now at Pedaluma High is in good hands with Rick Chris, and that was from the teaching of Coach Ellison. I spoke again of the, when he first came here, I was a senior in high school. That was a long time ago. But Coach Ellison has been the common thread through the athletic program at Pedaluma High. I think his integrity is unbiased. I mean, he's a terrific guy. As you look at his program, there's a lot of the coaches right now. I think we fully, as a coaching staff, I think we fully endorse it. Not only was he a great coach, but he was a great teacher. And wasn't just the football players that he taught, it was everyday students that he taught. And my kids had him as a teacher, and they remember to this day how terrific a person he was, and still is. So I fully endorse his renaming of the field in his honor. Thank you.
Anybody else? Derek.
My name is Greg Overton, 415 Melbourne, Pedaluma, California, 94952. I had the privilege of being coached by Steve Ellison, who was a great role model, like everybody said, on and off the field. As well, when my nephew played football at Pedaluma High some years later, I went to one of the meetings, and what he brought to the table was to teach these young people, football is just really a teaching experience. They're really learning a lot about life. And it wasn't so much the football, but what you're going to learn in life. And he kind of drove that home with these kids. And I was really impressed as my nephew was playing. So basically, all I would like to say is I would reiterate that I believe that the field should be renamed to Steve Ellison, to all the things that he stands for. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rick Chris, 700 Home Drive, presently the head football coach at Pedaluma High School. I coached under Coach Ellison for about 20 years, and he was one of my teachers. He was my coach. I was his ball boy for his first football team at Pedaluma High School. Can't say much more than what these guys have talked about already. He is, you know, he's the guy at Pedaluma High School that everybody looked up to. As a coach, I try to do and follow a lot of the same things that he did at Pedaluma High School. Bottom line is, you know, kids, over the 20 years that I coached with them, so many alumni came back to see him. You know, every year, we'd see new players coming back. And he just epitomizes the spirit of Pedaluma High, and it would be an honor to coach on a field named after.
David, I wonder if you would mind giving us just a little bit of background that you shared with us two weeks ago?
Well, speaking to the history of it, I'm David Stewart, principal of Pedaluma High. The history of the naming of anything is always something that Stephen and I spoke about this earlier. What makes, the name should be something. And what I found in my research around Durst Field is that the name had lost meaning for the population of Pedaluma. In doing the history and going back, I figured out who he was, but the average person just didn't know who that was. And in this case, Steve is going to connect to generations of people in this town for 40, 50, 60, 70 years because of what he did, because he's a gentle, wise man, who taught well, who coached brilliantly, and who is a pillar of our community to this day. And so I think the renaming of this field is significant and symbolic as a way to connect us to the next generation and beyond for all our kids in Pedaluma, at Casa and at Pedaluma High. So I fully endorse this, and I think I'm also speaking for a vast number of staff members who aren't here tonight, who signed an E D application that I sent out. So it's a lot of support to the school and the community for this, and I think it's an excellent thing to do.
Could you also just speak, you did a little bit of research, and I think you found a family member?
Yes. David Durst, who was superintendent of schools from 1931 to 1947, he had two kids, one of whom graduated from, Aileen may have as well, but I know that Stanley did graduate in 1941. He went on to serve in the Asian Theater during World War II, and eventually lived in Seattle and passed away last year. His sister, Aileen, lives in Sebastopol, and I did speak with her and mentioned that we were considering this name change. Though she didn't endorse it, she said, "Well, that sounds like it's a nice thing. Sounds like a nice man," the way she described Steve. So she lives in Sebastopol, where the Durshts eventually went to after his retirement, and they essentially left the community of Pedaluma, generally speaking. So not many ties left here.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else that wishes to speak to us?
Name's Keith Boyd, 305 Orchard Lane, Pen Grove. And the only reason I know about this is tonight, and I'm here for another matter. But, you know, I grew up in Sacramento and am now living here. My kids are part of the school district. I went to one of the most, you know, strongest football, high school, baseball programs in the Sacramento area. We had coaches, and its legacy is what it is. Now, researching in five minutes, listening to this, I figured out a little bit who Mr. Durst is. And if there's an issue with legacy and the lack of connection, perhaps that's ours as a community for not taking the steps to remember that. To take one man's legacy and discard it for another man who is here, where in 30 years we may be looking at the same situation, where is this man? What did he mean to us? Perhaps there should be a compromise, either a dual name, the stadium, Durst Field at Peter, Ellison Field at Ellison Stadium, something to that effect. I just, I have coaches that I'm very close to, one of the top high school baseball coaches for wins in the state of California, over 800 wins. And we've never considered renaming the stadium where we played in his honor because it would have been disregarding the legacy of the man who was there before. And that's my opinion, so just as a side note. Thank you.
Lisa Badley, 106 Lavia Drive. Anyway, I totally disagree with what you said. I went to school at Pedaluma High from 1976 to 1980, and I never knew who Mr. Durst was. Never had an idea. He was a superintendent. He didn't spend any time on that field. He was probably there when it was built, but he did not make the field what it is today for all of us who went to Pedaluma High, which Mr. Ellison did, or as Ellison, everybody knows him. So I think that even compromising on changing the name into a hyphen name is not something we should do. I think it should be Ellison Field. I think that Mr. Ellison epitomizes what you would want a coach for your children to be. He was gentle. He was hard on you. He understood things. He didn't let you make excuses. He was my track coach, not a football coach. He was wonderful. I worked very hard at it. He was also my teacher. So I think I can really speak, knowing that person. I also know his family. And his wife is a gracious, wonderful woman, and she embraced all of his students, the whole family did. And I think that Ellison Field would be a very good honor for someone who gave so much to the community. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? If not, then I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing. We have one other very quick public hearing, and then we're going to talk about the next item, which will be the agenda, and we may consider moving some things around to keep this thing going. So very quickly, a public hearing, or not very quickly, maybe this will be a very long public hearing, I don't know. Public hearing will be held regarding the revision of Pedaluma City Schools Board Policy Number 5131 entitled Conduct. I'm going to open up the public hearing. And do I have anybody? As suspected, we have nobody to speak on the public hearing regarding Board Policy 5131 Conduct, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Moving on to Item F, the adoption and approval of the agenda. Do I have anybody? A second. Is there any discussion regarding moving any items around?
I would move that, I mean, maybe because of all the people we have here for the idea. Ellison Field matter, maybe just move that up.
So that would be Administration, Human Resources, hold Item Number Four, renaming of the facility.
I just think it makes sense, and then people move on and we'll get back to that.
Well, we have a motion and a second to approve it as is, so we would need to...
Is that his motion?
No, no, it's the original motion, was to approve it as is, so we need to...
Have a motion to move it up.
What's Roberts on this?
She made the motion, so she has to modify it.
Yeah, there you go. Would you like to mark that?
Can we just move that up?
Yeah.
That's what I'd like to do.
Move it up to the next item on the agenda.
Yes.
We got a second on that? All those in favor? All right. So dinner will be on time for most of you today. We're going to go, we're going to bounce then the agenda to that particular item, Item Number Four. Hold Item Under Administration, Human Resources, entitled Renaming of Facility. The recommended motion is that the board consider approval of the proposed renaming of Pedaluma High School's Durst Field to Ellison Field after receiving input from the community during the public hearing. Do I have a motion or a drive, a push-up?
Second.
Some discussion?
I have one concern. We asked that the paper would publish something, the Artis Courier would publish something about the renaming of the field, and I didn't see anything in the Artis Courier. So I guess my question is, this obviously was something that is discussed with the committee at Pedaluma High School, because this definitely concerns them, but is the rest of the community aware of this? That's my question.
Well, I think that everybody here is aware of it.
Oh, yeah, obviously.
I suppose it will be those that are not here.
Obviously, but if it was...
Not seeing anybody not here, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I guess we're asking, was there outreach to the greater community? I think is what we're asking. And I don't know if David or the committee can speak to that.
There was personal contact with other members of the community. However, we felt that putting something in the paper and then having this motion not approved tonight would be very embarrassing for Coach Ellison, so we didn't really know how to handle it. We could say, you know, come and, in case it didn't happen. At this point, he doesn't know that this is on the agenda. He has no idea. So he just gives the word of outreach out every one week.
I think the issue...
He posts it on Facebook and posted it through emails, viral emails as well. Probably said, is this a process?
I think the issue is not whether Coach Ellison is worthy, because clearly, clearly from the community, I'm not from Pedaluma, I've been here a decade, a little over a decade, and clearly there's no doubt that this man is worth this. I think the question is, is renaming the facility, are we upsetting another part of the community by renaming it? So I'm glad to hear that more went out. So I think that was one of our concerns. As the one gentleman said, I would not have known about this had I not been here at the meeting for something else. So that was one thing I wanted to speak about. If I can, can I go on just quickly? Okay. So the other thing I found, I have small children, so I don't, and I realize elementary school and the secondary schools are quite different. But one of the things I've noticed with parents is I think sometimes as you're moving out of the school, you have to let the next generation mold their community as to what they want, if that makes sense. And it looks like there's a community right now here that spans a great sense of time that would like to see this changed, so I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And the last thing, to the gentleman's comment again about not knowing about it, and then following up on Lisa Badley's comment, that there does appear to also be a difference of not replacing some phenomenal coach, not that superintendent probably wasn't phenomenal and everywhere else. But we don't seem to have much story, like we do with Coach Ellison, about why it was named Durst Field, other than he was a superintendent at the time, and doesn't seem to still have ties to Pedaluma. And then again, I will repeat that I have elementary-aged children, and I'm a decade young in Pedaluma, so I'd love to hear what you have to say. But those are my issues.
First of all, I think, to your point, Carolyn, this is publication, I know Ben Isa was in the paper, but this is publicized, so we do have some public dissemination out there, if that addresses your concern at all. The second thing is, I think, to the gentleman who made a comment about legacies and stuff, that's kind of a mixed bag. You know, when Durst Field was named, I mean, that field could have looked completely different and been at a different location, high school. I happen to know it wasn't, but it was a lot different. That thing's been renovated, I think, a couple of different times. I'm a big fan of, how do I say, rewarding people while they're alive and living. I've been to a bunch of funerals this past week, unfortunately, and the testimonies, it's almost like too bad that people couldn't hear what we all thought and felt about them, you know, as living, breathing human beings. This is a chance to do that, to let a guy know that, hey, we really appreciate it, and to maybe set kind of a bar for other people who might want to emulate that. Rewarding good behavior, I think, is a great way to have people play it forward, if you will. Coach Ellison has probably touched, you know, thousands and thousands and thousands of kids' lives in a positive way, if you add up his years, 31 years of teaching and coaching. I happen to also know that Coach Ellison was, he got his start down at Sacred Heart, and he worked with a guy named Mike Holmgren. And Mike Holmgren, who some of you may have known, went on to have a very storied, you know, professional coaching career with a number of different teams, culminating with a Super Bowl victory for the Green Bay Packers. I have no doubt that Coach Ellison at any time probably could have left us and gone on and pursued that profession. Having said that, he decided to stay here. We all know, A, teachers aren't overpaid. Coaches definitely aren't overpaid. I mean, I think they get paid, but for an average high school coach, if it works out to more than a buck an hour, I'd be surprised, because they put in a lot of time, and Coach Ellison put in more time than most. I know it's a labor of love, but we all benefited from it. He's also been a hell of an ambassador for Pedaluma. I mean, not just Pedaluma High, but I watch a lot of games, and I've seen a lot of situations in sports, as we all have. We've all seen the, quite frankly, the negative examples, where he was the quintessential positive example. I never saw him argue with a ref. I never saw him, you know, berate a kid. I mean, sure, he's got passion, and I did see Coach Ellison get heated up a little time, and, you know, it was probably because Casey Gilroy audible to a pass or something, I don't know. He wasn't a big passing fan, but he was a great football coach. And I do know that he always carried himself with a lot of pride and carried Pedaluma with us like that. We benefited from his reputation. So I think when you have somebody like that, you need to find some way to reward them, not memorialize them, but reward them, and especially during their lives. So I think, given how many years have passed, and I think given that, you know, the overall impact, I think it's not unfair, and it's not dismissive of Mr. Durst, who had his run. And there are the school's facilities, and there'll be another board here in 30 years, and they'll have their preferences, and like Sherry said, those people will come in, and it'll be their time, and they can do with it what they will. I think it's good to keep it fluid. I do, so.
So I would just finish up unless anyone else has any comments to make, that I think we've probably also not taken into account or properly, well, first of all, I would say that based upon, obviously, this conversation, my personal knowledge of Steve Ellison, plus what you all have said here, the question of standing is off the table. Steve Ellison has the standing to be a person, to have a field named after him, and especially at Pedaluma High School. To me, that is not an issue. I think that what we haven't said or properly acknowledged is the fact that Steve Ellison was also a highly, highly regarded teacher. And at the end of the day, and I had a very good conversation with a friend the other day about the importance of extracurricular activities as it relates to high school, junior high school, and the role that a coach plays in those, and the fact that it's very important that we have the right people in the right place, and how it's also very beneficial if that right person in the right place may also be a highly regarded teacher in that particular facility. Steve Ellison was really the whole package, in my opinion. I do worry about a legacy. I will say that I graduated from Pedaluma High School in 1982. I had no idea who Mr. Durst is. I've been on this floor for seven years. I had no idea who Mr. Durst is, and I had to have David Stewart tell me. That doesn't mean that Mr. Durst was a highly regarded and should have anything named after him. I'm sure that's the case. I'm sure somebody wouldn't have done it 60 years ago if that wasn't the case. Maybe the answer is that we find something else that we could build, Steve, and name it after Mr. Durst, that may not be as appropriate, or I should say, maybe is more appropriate for somebody who is a superintendent, and then name the field after a head football coach where we're actually playing football. To me, that seems like if there's a compromise to be had out there, that we find an administration building, or this board room, or something else that is more appropriate for a superintendent, and keep that legacy going. I guess that would be the compromise that I would have if there was one. But other than that, I would just say that I've always supported this, and nobody else says in the comments, but I would ask that we take a vote on it.
I just noticed that that gentleman left a reminder, just if anyone's with him. It was a very good point, and this definitely would have been a different issue for me if we were replacing an Ellison with an Allison, and that was not something I had thought of tonight, and I hope he knows that that was a very good point that we actually took serious and was enlightened, so.
As we always appreciate, all the public comments that we do give. Anybody else? Okay, the motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Better get a sign. Now, wait a minute. I moved it up, so you got to wait till the students have been... You got to pay them. So, moving back over to, where are we? Excuse me, I was over in the minutes, for a minute. Special recognition, presentations, all right. So we're going to do student presentation, Students of the Month. Logistically, we're going to start with the junior high schools. We're going to start with, should we start with, start with... Okay, so we'll start with Ken O'Worth, and the way it's going to work is the Ken O'Worth Student Representatives will come up here, come to the podium. You'll introduce your student of the month. We'll all clap. They'll stand here very awkwardly and stare at the camera. Good part of this is we really get to have fun with, this is our YouTube video later. And they'll read the story, okay? So let's get Ken O'Worth, the junior high school student representative.
And our students just got here. Just got here.
Sit down. Back in, sit down.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Neese, and I'm in leadership at Ken O'Worth Junior High. Ken O'Worth Junior High School is pleased to introduce October Student of the Month, Edwin Akid.
Edwin, congratulations. All right. There you go.
Edwin is an eighth grade student who has worked hard at Ken O'Worth to maintain a 3.83 grade point average. Edwin's favorite class is mathematics because he likes to learn and work with numbers. When Edwin finishes high school, he would like to attend a college or university to study architecture. According to his teachers, Edwin is a hard worker and always attentive and on task. He frequently and willingly participates in class, and he offers thoughtful insights during class discussions. His work is always excellent and on time, and he is a role model for other students. When Edwin is not focusing on his schoolwork, he's playing soccer, which he has been participating in for over 10 years. He also enjoys gymnastics, which he has been participating in for two years. Edwin's family and friends... Edwin's family and friends describe him as intelligent, easy to talk to, funny and friendly. His family is extremely proud of all of his accomplishments and very pleased at his recognition here tonight. Edwin's effort and motivation will make him successful in whatever he chooses to pursue in life. Congratulations, Edwin.
I'd like to also acknowledge the fact that Edwin would not be able to do this but for the support of his family, his friends, his community. So those that are here with Edwin, if you'd stand up for him, please. I'm sorry, you were the first.
Ken O'Worth Junior High School is pleased to introduce the second October Student of the Month, Shelby Althuzen. Shelby is a gifted student who has maintained a 4.0 grade point average during her seventh and eighth grade years at Ken O'Worth Junior High School. Shelby has been a member of our basketball team for the past two years. Outside of school, Shelby enjoys playing basketball and softball. She has been playing both sports for seven years. Shelby's favorite class is science because she, because the class is hands-on with different activities in labs. After high school, Shelby hopes to attend San Diego University to earn a degree in criminology. Shelby's teachers describe her as self-motivated, to do her best work every time, and she goes out of her way to assist other students. She is polite, caring, and academically outstanding. Shelby's teachers go on to state she is a pleasure to have in class. Shelby's family and friends describe her as intelligent, athletic, funny, caring, and kind. Shelby's family is proud of her nomination and equally proud of her accomplishments both at Ken O'Worth and outside of school. Shelby's ability and attitude will continue to make her successful in school and life. Congratulations, Shelby.
There they are, right there. Hello, Junior.
I'm Whitney Board, and I'm president at Petaluma Junior High School. Petaluma Junior High School has selected Camille Leoni as their student of the month.
I think a chance to tell you that the prime picture spot is right over there behind you.
Oh, picture spot, dog beat.
Feel free to get up in there.
A bright, humorous, and hardworking young woman, Camille Leoni is Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month for October 2012. Her teachers agree that Camille is a joy to have in class, not just for her gracious humor and the work that she produces, but for the contributions she makes in class. Her engagement in the learning process raises the performance of those around her. Her teachers feel that she exemplifies the Petaluma Junior High School character trait responsible, adding that Camille follows through in all areas, is excited about her learning, and is conscientious and thorough. Following a successful seventh grade year punctuated by her earning principal honor rule and gold Renaissance awards for maintaining a 4.0 GPA, Camille is challenging herself again this year by taking an accelerated program of advanced English and geometry. In addition, she is advertising manager in a yearbook class and has balanced her academics with participation on the PJHS track team, placing in three events during the spring regional meet. A well-rounded student, Camille keeps herself busy outside of school. She runs, plays volleyball, and is passionate about her figure skating training. She is extremely proud of having been an alternate for the U.S. National Figure Skating Competition. Camille has many personal life goals in addition to maintaining good grace. She wants to continue to try new things and never be afraid to do so, be a leader, and help people who are in need. When asked about some of the important issues facing her peers, Camille names the economic crisis our country is going through and the environmental problems our, is facing. Camille's parents are very proud of her, and her mother shared this quote, "Camille rolls so well with what life has presented her. She excels yet has a very humble nature about her. We all love her self, and in a family that is so large, she has made a huge contribution with her smile and endless determination." Congratulations, Camille.
Good job.
We've got a whole family of Leoni over here. Good idea. I know, I would take that opportunity since I have to thank you, because I know that anytime if there's a school function, or anything we need help with, you're the two folks, so thank you so much.
Petaluma Junior High School has also selected Christian Hidalgo as October Student of the Month. A bright and responsible young man, Christian Hidalgo has been selected as Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month for October 2012. Christian's teachers are impressed with his enthusiasm for learning and his positive energy. Although quiet at times in class, it is clear to his teachers that he is respected by his peers for his thoughtfulness and his consistent effort to do his work. They described him using words such as polite, cheerful, and a hard worker. Christian's teachers also agree that he represents the Petaluma Junior High School character trait, self-motivated, stating that he does a good job of taking care of himself with academics. He asks for help when he needs it and takes his initiative on his own time. Christian transferred to Petaluma Junior High during the middle of seventh grade. He arrived here with a number of awards for citizenship and academic achievement in elementary school. Here at PJHS, Christian made an immediate impression by enrolling in advanced English and math classes, completing the semester with a high GPA and earning a silver Renaissance award for his efforts. An eighth grader this year, Christian is off to a strong start with a 4.0 GPA, while challenging himself in Algebra I and developing his cooking skills in culinary arts. Outside of school, Christian keeps himself busy by playing soccer and basketball for fun, drawing, and listening to music. Christian's goals include maintaining a 4.0 GPA throughout junior high and high school, attending college, and enrolling in a medical program. His career goal is to become a doctor. Along the way, Christian wants to start taking piano lessons because he loves the way the instrument sounds. Christian's parents are pleased to add this comment, "As parents of Christian, we are truly blessed and proud of him." Congratulations, Christian.
Good evening, my name is Brandon Garner, and I'm ASB president at Petaluma High School, and Petaluma High is proud to announce our first Student of the Month, Haley Lynch. Haley is a dedicated student at Petaluma High School. Haley has always strived to take as many AP and honors classes as she can handle. She has a cumulative GPA of 4.06 after six semesters of high school. She is hoping to receive all As this semester, which would give her a 4.67 for her first half of senior year. She has been a member of CSF since freshman year, and has received the Harold Mahoney Family Community Achievement Award for being in the top 10 in her class for the last two years. Along with school, Haley has completed almost 700 hours of community service. Most, but not all of these hours were dedicated to her church, because religion and faith is very important to her. She has also counseled at several summer camps, including a camp she attended as an eighth grader at Stanford. This year, she is on the Petaluma Youth Commission, which is the city council for teenagers. Haley has been a varsity runner on the cross-country and track teams for all four years, and she has been an honorable athlete every year. She enjoys coming out to practice every day with the girls on her team. She has been a captain for cross-country and was the girls' cross-country first team to ever make it to state her freshman year in 2009. She received the coaches award as a sophomore and the team captain award as a junior. On the weekends, Haley works at Blue Restaurant downtown and itselfed a job for almost two years. She enjoys reading, being outside, playing the piano, and spends time with her siblings, mostly her little sister, who is truly her best friend. Haley sets her dream school at Stanford and hopes to attend there. However, she realizes that this is a reach, so her top schools include UCLA, UC Davis, and the University of San Diego. She wants to major in biology because science and math are her favorite subjects. Her interest for these subjects came at a young age and was strengthened when she was nominated and chosen to attend a week-long science and math camp for eighth grade girls at Stanford. Haley also wants to minor in French and says she loves the language and culture because of her teacher Madame, who passed away in February. After college, she wants to go to medical school and, as of now, become an orthopedic surgeon, but she says this could change. Thank you, Haley.
After a few more here, for Haley, another student of the month.
Petaluma High would also like to introduce our other Student of the Month, Jordan French. Throughout high school, Jordan has challenged himself inside the classroom and out. At his previous school in New York, he took 10 classes a year, won school awards for academic excellence, acted in plays, and served as president of multiple clubs. He moved to California a week before his junior year began and landed on both feet here at Petaluma High, signing up for numerous clubs and AP and honors courses. He has maintained a 4.33 cumulative GPA, but his dedication to academics extends beyond school. As indicated by his summer internships in rheumatology at UCSF, and his recently obtained internship in engineering at SSU, he has earned perfect scores on five AP tests and the SATs, and he is currently a National American Scholarship semifinalist. Outside of the academic world, he plays the piano and saxophone and is co-president of global citizens corps here at Petaluma High School. He has also taken advantage of the various community service opportunities, ranging from assisting in local campaigns to flying to Haiti on medical relief trips. Thank you, Jordan.
For our October Student of the Month, we would like to congratulate Erica. Erica is a diverse member of the Casa Grande High School community. While maintaining a cumulative GPA of 4.3 in numerous AP classes, Erica is involved in many extracurricular activities, such as Gender Quality Now, Ultimate Frisbee, and honor society clubs, to name a few. She is also a member of the varsity girls' golf team. However, Erica's two greatest passions are music and academic decathlon. Currently, she plays French horn in the Casa Grande Symphonic Band in the San Jose Symphony Youth Orchestra, where she has had the honor of playing in the Green Music Center at Davie's Symphony Hall. She is the co-captain of Casa Grande's academic decathlon team. We put the "st" in "studying," and hopes to lead the team to its 29th consecutive championship. In the future, Erica aspires to study physics or mathematics at a four-year university and become a research scientist.
Alright, I'd like to introduce Casa's October Student of the Month, Max Granger. Max Granger is a native of Petaluma. He attended Sonoma Mountain Elementary School and Ken O'Worth Junior High. He is currently a senior at Casa Grande High School. Max has always excelled in school with accomplishments ranging from surprising his first-grade teacher by replying to her call for adwords like "sack," "cat," and "bat" with atom, you know, the thin molecules. He's scoring perfect 36s on the math and science portions of the ACT. Max started the band in fifth grade and is still an active band member. In addition to band, he is co-president and founder of Casa's chess club and science club, and he is active on the school's academic decathlon team and in the various honor societies. Outside of school, Max enjoys reading, learning, and, like any teen, hanging out with his friends. He is an avid scout and recently earned their highest-ranked Eagle Scout. Max is preparing to apply to several selective colleges in hopes to study physics, or perhaps law. He plans to pursue a career in particle astrophysics or cosmology.
I just gotta let that sit for a minute. That was pretty cool. You know, we deal with a lot of really tough things here, and you all have been dealing with them as well. I mean, this economy has made public education a very difficult product to deliver, and every time we have one of these events at the school board meeting, you all children inspire the rest of us to keep doing what it is. And when I say the rest of us, I mean teachers, staff, administration, support staff. So thank you very much. I'll have to say, those of you in middle school, that bar got set pretty high tonight. You got four years, and I hope to see you again on the wall of fame up here, so. Very nicely done. What we normally do here now is take a break. I'd like to thank those of you that stayed for this, and I trust that you felt it was absolutely working. So we'll take a quick break. Anybody who can stay, please stay, we've got a lot of other fun stuff to do, but if you do have homework to do, and some of you sound like you probably do. Alright, quick break. Moving on to presentation number two. Jane?
Yes.
We're gonna be talking about Spanish for Spanish speakers teachers report.
Right.
Yeah, some post-interviews, too.
So, we have had the great pleasure of having a group of teachers at the junior highs and high schools working together on a Spanish for Spanish speakers project. This is important to us because, as you know, last year, we certified that we will be giving, in fact, we actually have given the very first round of seals of biliteracy on high school diplomas. We also began to build a Spanish for Spanish speakers program, a Spanish literacy program, a biliteracy program, starting at McKinley School, working up through junior highs and then into high schools through Ken O'Worth and Casa Grande. So this is a brief presentation about the curriculum that will be available to students at the junior high and high schools, okay? And I'd like to introduce our four teachers. Anne Osterly from Petaluma Junior High, Rebecca Chavez Martinez from Casa Grande High School, Kelly Cobanis from Petaluma High School.
Don't get jealous of my camera.
And Rachel Galvez from Ken O'Worth.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Rebecca Martinez Chavez and I'm a teacher at Casa Grande High School. First of all, we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to share with you about our Spanish for Native Speakers Heritage Speakers Program. The brochure that you have in front of you gives you a concise overview of our program. I will give you a brief history of how we started. Back in the 90s, there was an attempt to begin such a program at our district. A Level One course was offered at Casa Grande, but unfortunately, the teacher who taught this course left our district back in 1999. When I arrived at Casa in 2001, I was given one section of Spanish for Native Speakers One. It was a tremendous challenge to teach this course because the students in the class came with different levels of proficiency. Since one section was not enough to enroll all the Latino students who decided to take a Spanish class, they were placed in regular Spanish courses, courses that were not appropriate for this population. Since our Latino students already speak the language, they need a literature-based courses that taught skills or that teach skills similar to those that are taught in an English Language Arts class. During my first year at Casa, I presented to Sue Owens, my school administrators and department colleagues, a proposal to develop a program that would truly meet the needs of our students. This program will place students based on their level of proficiency. It would also pave the road to AP Spanish Language for Native Speakers courses and AP Spanish Literature courses. We all agreed that given the opportunity, our Latino students would excel. At one point, we were very fortunate to have nine sections of SNS courses at Casa. Unfortunately, now, without the vegetarian cuts, those courses have been reduced quite a bit. My colleagues will share with you how we have been able to develop over the years a program that we feel proud of and that we feel that it truly serves the needs of our students and helps them succeed academically.
So my name is Rachel Galvez. I teach Spanish and Culinary Arts at Kennelworth Junior High, along with, I've taught Spanish at Casa Grande, and so I know at least the east side of the Pedaluma School District very well. I just want to say it was really exciting to see those students up here receiving all of those accolades and to see that, you know, there are heritage speakers that are up here receiving those high awards. When I came in to teach Spanish for Native Speakers, I was trained as a foreign language teacher, and that is not the same as being trained as a Language Arts teacher. It's very different. So we went after a grant called the Pacific Coast Teacher Innovation Grant, and we were awarded $30,000 for two years for professional development. And we took those funds, we went to professional conferences, we worked with Bay Area Writers Project, who came in and assisted us with learning new techniques and strategies for our classes. We also collaborate with one another, we research, and have been writing curriculum. And the four of us represent every secondary school in the Pedaluma City Schools District. After two years of hard work, we were granted an additional $15,000 for a third year of professional development. So this year, we will be going to AATSP, where I hope to present some of the stuff that we've done. Also, we've had great support through the district. We had eight days of collaboration over the summer where we started to develop an aligned program for all of our secondary schools and elementary schools.
My name is Anne Osterly, and I currently teach seventh and eighth grade Spanish at Pedaluma Junior High as well as seventh grade French. And before that, I was teaching at Casa Grande High School. I was teaching Spanish, French, and Spanish for Native Speakers. The question that often arises is who should take Spanish Language Arts for Heritage Speakers? Who are the students that should take these classes? And it's basically students who either arrived here from a Spanish-speaking country and had a few years of schooling in their native country, and obviously, this is their first language and need to continue developing it. But more and more so over the last eight or nine years, what we are seeing is a great need for heritage speakers. The difference between native speakers and heritage speakers is that heritage speakers were born here, but their families are immigrants and their first language still was Spanish. So it's the first language that they learned at home, but most of their schooling has taken place in the Pedaluma City Schools. And we know that one of the big concerns that we have in the district is helping a lot of these students who become the long-term EL learners. And this kind of program really supports that because the research that we've been doing over the last two and a half years shows conclusively that developing the skills in the primary language, the first language that a student has learned, transfers and allows them then to advance much faster in their second language. And just having taught ELD a few years back, I also know that students who come from a background with a very strong schooling in their first language usually are exited out of the EL program in two to three years, even if they come here in their early teens. So it definitely is really important for these students to develop their skills in their primary language. So basically, these students, they understand and they speak Spanish at home, and they have a somewhat limited vocabulary in terms of especially their academic vocabulary. And so supporting that in a Spanish for Native Speakers or Heritage Speakers class helps them develop that vocabulary in their first language. And as foreign language teachers, as Spanish teachers, we know that a lot of the academic language that we use in English comes from Latin, and so many of them, developing their vocabulary in Spanish definitely transfers towards them being able to improve their academic vocabulary in English.
Hello, my name is Kelly Cobanas. I teach Spanish at Pedaluma High School. I teach Spanish III as well as Spanish for Native Speakers, Level One and Level Two. This is my eighth year, and I, with the help of my colleagues, have been developing the program at our high school. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the benefits of having these classes presented to our students. Again, as Anne had already referenced, the importance of having a strong skill set in one's primary language. If you don't have that strength within your first language, it's really hard to have that strength in your second language. And as Anne mentioned, a lot of our students are considered long-term EL learners, and we really want to support them in their studies, and we want to support them going through our schools, graduating. When they're taking Spanish for Native Speakers or Heritage Speakers classes, they're also, not only reinforcing their own skills in Spanish, they're acquiring more skills in English, but also they're able to graduate with A through G requirements. So they're able to have the support of the classes that they need to be taking to be able to graduate and be ready and prepared to continue at the university level. Excuse me, we are very proud that many of our students continue to take AP Spanish and that they tend to pass the test with flying colors. That's a real boost in confidence for our students. Sometimes it's the only AP class that they might be able to take. So we, again, think that's really important that we offer these classes to them. We're so excited about the SEAL of Biliteracy, and so that's another real plus of having the Spanish for Native Speakers classes where they are being proficient in both languages, and when they graduate, they have that SEAL on their diploma, which is huge. It helps them prepare for college again, as I've said, and for their careers as bilingual citizens of our society and the world. One thing that we ask of you is more support. We really would like to be able to offer more sections. As I said, now we have two sections, so we can have 33 students at Level One and 33 students at Level Two. So that unfortunately does not give access to the vast majority of our native speakers. So again, we would like more sections. We'd like to have support. And we have quite a large population of long-term English learners, approximately 680 students at the secondary level, that's 15%, and more than 500 have been in the school for six or more years here in the United States. So they're stuck. We believe that our program helps to unstick them, if you will, and to set the bar here because we want them to succeed. We want them to have academic success in all levels of schooling and outside of school as well. And we would also ask that we strengthen our program, elementary through middle and high school. Right now, we have a SABR program going in our high school for sure. Junior highs, we still don't have, junior highs don't have equal access to the curriculum as we speak. Pedaluma Junior High does not offer the class, and we would love to see that happen. Also, we really would love to have the opportunity, as we have had, for teacher training and to have support and materials that are appropriate for these particular students. As my colleague said, teaching Spanish as a foreign language is quite different than teaching Spanish for a heritage learner, just as an ELD class is not the same thing as a Language Arts class, if you can make that comparison. So again, having that understanding, having the teacher training, having appropriate materials to support our students is what we ask. In these tough economic times, we're asking for more things, please. We are the voice of our students and many of the parents, and so, and many parents who are not heard. And so we just feel like these classes are so positive, and students love them, and they have a connection, and they walk in and they're learning about history and music and art and culture, and it's a space where they can talk about things in their lives that perhaps they don't have the opportunity to speak about in other classes. So we thank you for listening to us, and I believe my colleague Rebecca has some final comments.
Thank you. Just as every one of us, you know, has been saying and really seeing the benefits of enrolling in Spanish for Native Speakers classes, I just want to share with you a couple of student testimonials. I would like to share, you know, that students come back to share with us how successful they are now in college and how beneficial the Spanish for Spanish Speakers courses were for them. We have the case, for example, of Kiara, one of our students who graduated about three years ago from Casa Grande High School. She's now in her third year at UC Berkeley. When she first enrolled at UC Berkeley, she contacted us to let us know how excited she was when she first enrolled in one of the literature classes at UC Berkeley. She saw the list of authors she was going to read, and she said, "I know I can tackle this," because so many of these authors were the same authors that we studied in our Spanish for Literature class. So that gave her great confidence. She has decided to do a double major. She's now majoring in English Literature and a Spanish Language Studies. And she just recently completed a summer internship in Madrid, Spain, at a law firm. So it's just wonderful to hear this kind of stories, you know, that students come back and they call us, and they let us know, they send us emails of how these programs have really impacted their lives and how it has really contributed to their academic success at colleges, you know. We also have the other case. So it's at different levels, you know. This is the story at UC Berkeley. We also have the story of Araceli, who just graduated from Sonoma State. We know many of our students go to Sonoma State. She was just so excited about what she learned in this program that she wanted to continue. She actually decided to major in Spanish. So she graduated in June, and now she's thinking about pursuing a master's degree counseling to coming back to the community and really bridging and recruiting Latino students to motivate them to continue their studies at the college level. And the final, that I know, we could add more, but I know we do have other names to do. So the very last one. A student, Angel, who is enrolled at Pedaluma Junior, at the Santa Rosa Community College, Santa Rosa Community College, where he called, let's say, how grateful he was of the work that he had done in our classes, in our AP classes, because this is a student who immigrated to this country as a ninth grader, who was part of the ELD program, and he was now taking an English Literature class at the community college level, and it was a challenge. But he indicated that the work that he had done in the Spanish for Native Speakers program had really prepared him to analyze literary pieces and how confident he felt that he could definitely succeed. So as you can see, it happens in every different level, community college level, state college level, the UC. And I will share more, but if you give us more time next time, we'll share more. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Do we have any questions? Hang on one second. Does anybody have any questions? I just had one, really quick one. You had said 500 students have been here six years and they were stuck. I didn't, I didn't understand what you meant by "stuck."
Oh, they're, they're, they're still, they're a part of the English Language Learners Program, and they don't, they can't test out of self, they can't pass their CST.
Oh, okay.
They're stuck in intermediate.
Gotcha.
They plateau.
You talked about two sections. Can you give us a rough idea of what's the cost per section?
$15,000.
How much?
$15,000.
Okay.
You need $30,000.
I get that part.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Thank you for taking. Move on to item H, approval of the minutes of October 9th. I believe we were all here. Is everybody all looking at the votes for October 9th?
Second.
As soon as the arbiter, who was first and second?
Let's share, yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to comments from the public, and I actually have two speaker cards. Do I have any more speaker cards? Comments from the public. That's it? Okay. Now, because I happen to know these two speakers, I'm going to exercise the executive privilege and not read this very long thing that I've read to you a thousand times, a form under government code 549543A. Do you promise to stay within the boundaries of 54954.3A? So Loretta, you want to start?
Sure. I swear. Hi, Loretta, please, Maggie, 1100 Santa Barbara Way, here in Pedaluma. I'm the president of the CSEA Union, and I just wanted to let everybody know at home that you really need to vote yes for 30. And I'm just going to give you a couple of reasons why. Pedaluma City Schools has already been cut $10 million in the last five years. If this proposition fails, we would receive, here at Pedaluma City Schools, an additional $3.3 million cut. The school year could also be reduced by up to 15 more days, which would take us down to 160 days, which is not the direction that we should be going. We should be increasing the amount of days in school, not decreasing. So I just wanted to tell everybody you need to vote yes on 30. I've been doing what I can do. I'm out there phone banking people, telling everybody, you've got to vote yes on 30. So please do that. Thank you.
I am Colleen Maloney, and I am here representing the Pedaluma Federation of Teachers, and I was asked to speak on behalf of that organization because you wanted to know what we've been doing regarding the upcoming election and Proposition 30, which means that we started off by sending out these lovely little notices to our teachers, asking them to commit to voting yes on 30. When they completed this commitment card, we promised not to call them because we've been phone banking, along with Loretta's group and along with management. And so we've turned over our PFT offices to a variety of teachers pretty consistently since the first part of October, and they've been showing up, and we've been phoning people in Nevada and the Tamaulipas area, all over Marin County, as well as primarily Pedaluma. And we've been asking members of PFT to get out and vote, which is really important, but also to vote yes on 30 because, as Loretta mentioned, there are tremendous cuts. And on the horizon, if 30 doesn't pass, and so that makes us all very nervous. And in addition to this, we also handed out things like this to our membership and this sort of information, just giving them soundbites as to why it's important to vote this way and what it means to public education. All right? Thank you so much. Would you like one? Awesome. I brought extras. I can't see it from that far away. There you go. I can't see what you're handing out.
Can you see it very close?
Oh, you've already seen these, huh?
I watched Troy.
All right.
Thank you. I could be your Vanna.
I could be. Thank you.
As we always say at the end of these, we appreciate your public comment. We do value your input, although it's not on the agenda. We're not allowed to comment on it. Thank you very much for taking the time to speak.
Thank you.
All right.
We have 20 minutes, don't we?
20, really?
On one, on one topic, yeah. You've got to read the rolls, Colleen.
I thought it was five minutes.
It's per speaker, 20 minutes on one topic.
Oh. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item J, report on activities and correspondence to school board members. We've got Cherry Valley site visit and the lunch there, some varsity soccer, leather sporting events.
We had a nice lunch there.
Did you?
We had both the Cherry Valley parent lunch and the regular hot lunch, which I enjoyed.
Guess which one Cherry made me.
She got the salad, I got the hot one.
That's not true.
But it was, it was good. I don't know if I would have ordered seconds, but it was pretty good.
I ate all of mine.
All right. Let's go ahead and talk about the consent agenda. We're going to look for an approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Remember, we moved item four administrations. We've already talked about that. Let's go over to, do we have any discussion on board policy this year? Wargaming units or complaints under administration and resources? No discussion? Okay, so let's go to business services. The first items, a hold item, the acceptance of donation. Recommend a motion that the board accept the list of donations.
So moved.
Do we not have manage? Is there anything unusual about the donations that we?
Yeah, it's on hold. To accept a donation from PTA, and today we have principal from PTA school, Amy Caden just showed you the donation.
Hi. Hi.
Surely they don't always tell me why they're going.
That's okay. No problem.
My fault.
No worries. I just wanted to share with you guys that it has been a dream of our Pan-Groove community for quite a few years to build a covered lunch area for our students. And currently, we have about 13 picnic tables that are stretched along our block top area, and trees only cover a couple of them, so we encounter lots of yellow jackets and melted sandwiches. And on the hot days, our parent community has really been pushing and excited for shade structure. So last year, through our Jogathon, our PTA raised $16,000 to go towards the shade structure, and we knew that they cost anywhere between $25,000 and $35,000, which is unbelievable, but that's their cost. This is a prefabricated structure. We secured $10,000 through winning the Rayleigh's Grant for Region 5 at the beginning of this school year, which was really exciting. We received a $1,000 donation from our local Wells Fargo branch, and so that puts us right within reach, and our PTA is graciously, along with the district office, helping with a few of the loose odds and ends, the architect fee, which is an additional $3,000, and having some surveyors come out to just make sure that all of our inspections are as they should be. So the structure is going to run us approximately $29,000, and so I know you have the letter there from our PTA. They're asking that they are allowed to donate that to us, and our plan is to build this over spring break. So we currently, the structure is going to be 20 by 66, and what else? Spring break will be, yeah. It's, it's long and narrow. We looked at several different sizes and what it would look like towards other block courts and such. So we worked with, Julia St. John came out and helped me, and we did lots of measuring with sidewalk chalk, and finally decided on the 20 by 66. So we're currently in the process of getting two other bids to just make sure that we are making the best financial decision and are very excited to put this up over spring break. The Rayleigh's Grant stipulates that we do spend the money within this school year. So that's a great incentive for us to go ahead and move forward.
If Troy matches fun, can we name it after him?
We, I, I'm thinking that. We could then get rain gutters. I mean, we could pick our color roof. Yes.
What color is?
I can't wait to hear it from you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Enthusiastically, aye. Okay, let's move to educational services. We've got four policies, conduct, which we had a public hearing on, administering medication monitoring health conditions, asthma management, and headlights. Does anybody have a comment for these? These are all first readings, aren't they?
Yes.
Yes, they're all first readings. Okay, so we'll see them again. All right. And that's everything under educational services. Let's move on to the public report of action taken in closed session. We have three cases to discuss tonight, and again, for those watching at home, I just remind you, all this information was presented in closed session, so we'll be voting on some things that will sound like we don't really know what we're talking about, but we do because we talked about it in closed session. These are related to student discipline. Case number three, a case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. Recommend a motion to the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. Student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semester of the 2012-2013 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Post. Case number three is a 4-0 vote. Case number 401, right? Case number four, case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. Recommend a motion for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance with to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. Student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the 2012-2013 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, life skills, counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 401. Case five, case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. Prior disciplinary actions have been attempted and were not successful and/or due to the nature of the act, the presence of the pupil, causes a continuing danger to the physical safety of the pupil and others. Recommend a motion for the board to support the site discipline's team recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to facilitate enrollment in a county-operated community day school. Student's expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the 2012-2013 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, anger management counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Post. 401. All right, future business calendar of activities for board members. Steve, do we have anything?
No.
Out of order, coming up?
Routine.
Okay, the standard stuff that's been?
Next to you.
Come on, give us something.
Okay, we can, we'll be talking about Common Core standards and the new Common Core standards that have been adopted.
That will get me back here. And that's regular media will be held at 6:00 PM on November 13th, right here, 200 other street, along the California. Welcome to, uh?
Linder.
Linder?
Goodbye.
Second.[1606.15]